Thank you very much for this welcome. I am actually very pleased to be here. We started the West Consultation yesterday in Lotoka. We had some really good interaction with the ordinary people, farmers. Then we moved to Nadi, we had some good discussions there. The reason why I am in the West is essentially for, you know, completing the consultation that we started as part of our National Economic Summit, which was hugely successful. We had to actually stop people from coming. We could not accommodate hundreds of others who wanted to come. And I know that many people from the West were not able to come. So we felt that it's important to touch base with the business community in the West and also find opportunity to talk to other people as well. We had a beautiful session with the market vendors earlier today. And it is quite interesting how much wisdom and knowledge and experience and anecdotes that reside in the people. And that's why, as part of our philosophy of our new government, we believe that governments, when they begin to feel that they know everything, that they can dictate everything, that's when things don't fall into place. And as part of that philosophy of consultation, dialogue and working together, we feel that these sort of discussions, open, transparent, once, without any fear, is very important. And people in Nadi, yesterday afternoon, the Chamber of Commerce, where we had a huge turnout, said to me that this was the first time that they were able to say things quite openly and without any fear to a government minister. So that was refreshing to hear. Just to give you a quick sort of rundown on where we are, and many of you know already. We've heard a number of reports that have come out, the World Bank report, the Fiscal Review Committee that we appointed, which was always a feature of governments in the past, finance ministers appointed fiscal review committees. They looked at expenditure, tax policies, fiscal policies, reported back to ministries of finance, ministers of finance. And it provided a good source of experience and issues that ministries of finance could undertake and formulate the budget, include elements of that. So we've done that as well. And what is clear, essentially, are three things. One, we have to deal with the debt situation. It obviously escalated post-COVID, but we were already, as the World Bank points out, in a difficult trajectory well before COVID. So when COVID came, we went further into debt. And so it's there, it's something that we have to deal with. So the budget that we want to formulate will rest on three fundamental principles. One, we want to have a fiscal consolidation strategy, which means that we need to look at how much we can grow the economy, how much we can raise in revenue, how much we can spend, and how we can sustain that growth so that in the short term, in the medium term, and in the long term, we are able to reduce debt to GDP ratio to a management level or sustainable level. So that's the strategy, and that's what I presented to Parliament earlier, as required by law. The good news, of course, is this, that the economic recovery last year and economic recovery this year, we have just revised the Maceconomic Committee chaired by the Reserve Bank, has just revised the growth forecast, the GDP growth forecast for 2023 from 6.3% to a conservative 8%, which means that we could go even higher than 8%. And that's coming from a very, very strong rebound of the tourism numbers. In fact, the statistics on forward booking show that we are almost achieving 100% recovery, which means, you know, pre-COVID level. Remittances are very strong. The first quarter was more than 300 million. You extrapolate that to the next three quarters, you're looking at about more than 1.2, 1.3 billion dollars remittances, which obviously is driving buoyancy within the consumption side of the economy. So that's good news. The other good news is we can feel that there is a sense of confidence, a sense of freedom, kind of sense of exuberance amongst the investors, amongst the people themselves. But also, we are expecting some big, you know, announcements by some international investors as well. There is a strong urge, there is a strong effort, there is a strong desire from our international partners, which we feel perhaps was not there before, whether you talk about the US, whether you talk about India, whether you talk about the Indo-Pacific Strategy. DPM Manoa is in the US, you know, working on the Indo-Pacific Economic Framework. There is a strong desire to look at Fiji as a country now which provides a very strategic position as part of the Indo-Pacific Strategy. India just announced the construction of a major super specialty 100-bed hospital, which is probably just the first phase. And that announcement was made by Prime Minister Modi with our prime minister when he was in Papua New Guinea, attending the India-Pacific Summit. So if you look at the macro-regional global environment, things are looking very good. What we as a government want to ensure, that we provide the right environment, we know that we've talked about ease of doing business. World Bank used to do that. For eight years, you know, when I was in opposition, I talked about it. Sometimes it's better to come into government after being in opposition for a while, because you know the issues and you have a good handle of the intricacies of what was going on, whether it's to do with the budget, whether it's to do with law, whether it's to do with economic policies. So we are looking at how to improve the ease of doing business, whether it's to do with town councils, planning office, sorry, town and country planning, lens department, ITLTB. We have now got an investment facilitation committee, which is chaired by the Minister for Trade and Investment at a highest level with tremendous success to make sure that we provide that conducive environment to the investors. The other important point that I want to make is about the formulation of the budget. So the three pillars would be fiscal consolidation, looking at a timeframe. Then we want to look at our revenue policies. We have to collect revenue. We can't run a government without collecting enough money. But in this budget, our philosophy, my philosophy, is that we want to create a very fine balance. We want to make sure that we collect enough revenue. We not only collect enough revenue, but we spend enough as well. So this budget is both going to be about addressing the revenue side as well as making sure that we spend the right amount of money as well. Whether it's to do with, because the infrastructure deficit, despite having spent millions of dollars or billions of dollars over the years, our infrastructure has a huge deficit. Dr. Bhagat would know about the infrastructure deficit in the health facility. I used to say when I was in opposition that never in the history of Fiji we've had such bad health facility and services in the country. And we have to address that. Then we have to address the issue of water. We think the estimate that we've done as part of our infrastructure plan, World Bank, ADB, we probably need a billion dollars just to bring water infrastructure, sewerage, up to speed, because hardly any investment was done in terms of replacing for glass. Last time, you know, pipes were changed, the central division was in the early 80s. The Vidya Water Project, which was a project initiated by the previous government, you know, good decision, good project, once that's completed, that might solve some problem in 60 to 70%, but we still would have the problem of old pipes where 50% of water actually leaks out of the system. And water infrastructure is very important for everything, for our consumers, for our business, for our investors. So we're looking at that. The other good news is that we are about to sign a project, probably worth about 90 million dollars, a tourism development project for Banua Levu, which will include an upgrade of Llamasi Airport and Sabshabu Airport. We want to build enough capacity there in terms of infrastructure so that tourists could also fly to Banua Levu. It could spare other sectors, you know, link to the tourism industry. So that's where we are. Final point I want to make is the government, the third pillar of the budget, will be looking after our people. So all these rumors, you know, those, some lies and rumors were spread before the election. Some of it is continuing now, that the new government will reduce social welfare or take away people's, you know, free tuition in schools, there'll be no scholarships. These are malicious rumor and lies, which is not true. We, as soon as we came into government, first month, we looked at the budget. We identified about 50 million dollars that we knew was going to be wasted or was not a priority. We redeployed that and provided 200 dollars each for every student from preschool to high school. Was a perfect timing. First time, the feedback that we got was that all that money, probably 95% usage was for the right purpose, where parents, kids went and bought bags, shoes, stationery, lunch containers, etc., tools that kids need to cushion the impact of rising cost of living. And the transition that people were making, families from post-COVID, loss of income, loss of jobs, people are still settling in. The final big challenge that we have to address is the shortage of labor. Skills, sometimes, you know, for employers and for governments, it is, it is... The labor market is very strong, the job growth is very strong. Some of it is replacement, but some of it is actually jobs are being created. Investments are starting, the banks are telling us that, you know, the loan approvals are very strong, the uptake, the disbursements, the start of the project, it's a little bit slow. Possibly, you know, there is a wait-and-see game in some quarters, you know, in terms of what might be in the budget. And for the budget, we want to be open about. We are saying we're going to raise some taxes. How much, we are still working that out. Somebody asked me about STEM duty the other day in Nadi. I said, "No, we're not bringing STEM duty as yet." But we might consider the following here. So people know. We don't want surprises, too many surprises in the budget, except in areas where it could be very speculative and people might... But otherwise, we want to say very clearly to the people, this is what we want to do, this is our intention, this is why we want to do that. We want to bring laws by discussion. We don't want to put a bill which nobody knows in the morning and pass it in the afternoon or the next day. We haven't done that so far. And so the style of governance would be very different. So that's where we are. And we, I want to thank especially the business community. People, as I've said, we received a lot of support, a lot of, you know, expression of good intentions. And we look forward to working with them. And I'm very pleased to be here and I look forward to listening to all of you. Local government, we will, we have announced we're going to have elections. We want to put the power back into the people, whether it's growers' councillors, whether it's town councils. People must ever say, local governments are very important. They're the second tier of government, they drive a lot of things in the economy. The people must be involved in it. We can't drive everything by sitting in Suba, and it's not a good thing anyway. So we want to make sure that local government, councillors, I mean, there are always problems, but it is to run well. You are accountable then to the right peers, the administrators, the chief executives. Right now, you might have some good people, you know, who present themselves to be very accountable, but that's by their choice. But when you have elected councillors, that's the institution that you have. So thank you all for coming, and I appreciate the time and I look forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
Representing Rokey Club of Lotoka. My question too is about, two years ago, I think we had the registered NGOs, so because they didn't submit their financials. So my question is, is the government looking at some sort of procedures where NGOs that don't spend, that don't even have money up to 10,000 dollars and because they can't afford to have audits? I know there was a few NGOs that were deregistered a couple of years back. So is the government looking into that?
I think that's a very good question. As I said earlier, sometimes, you know, you bring in policies and laws without consultation, without... You know, you might think that you can change this law and solve one problem, which you have identified, but then there are unintended consequences of laws. And if you don't consult widely, you actually end up making a terrible, terrible blunder and mistake. And that decision, you know, okay, you know, everybody needs accountability and transparency. But a lot of the NGOs exist in a very, very difficult environment. And so if there was a little bit more discussion, a little bit more help in getting the NGOs, smaller ones, you know, de-market, demarketing, you know, on some basis, you know, whether it's the amount of income you have or the grant you get, you can make these processes easy, instead of saying, "Oh, you know, if you don't do this, you get deregistered." So a lot of good NGOs, which are important. And we believe that governments need to empower NGOs, we need to work with them. They're the coal front, you know, of a lot of the things that happen. And we can use NGOs to deliver a lot of the services more effectively than, you know, if you try and do it on your own. So we will, we will have a look at some of those laws and requirements just from the point of view of making sure that we are reasonable in applying some of those policies.
Can some of those decisions be reversed?
Some of them will be reversed. For example, I mean, we, the draconian... See, what happened was, a lot of people don't know that when the 2013 constitution came into place, so you had a military coup in 2006 and the election was held, the constitution was brought in in 2013, the election got held in 2014. So between 2006 and right up to the first sitting of Parliament in 2014, everything was run, every law was made as a decree. So somebody, you know, decided, "Okay, this is a law that we're going to make." Now, when the constitution came into place, all the decrees became part of the constitution, were retained in the constitution. And some, some decrees, you know, like section 173 and 174, actually preserve some of those laws. So media decree, which was quite draconian, became an act of Parliament. See, the last decree that was passed was, once the government at that time won the election, because they were still a military government, transitioning to a elected government, they brought a decree to establish the enumerations and allowances decree, which said the salaries of the prime minister and the ministers and the allowances. We have in the last cabinet decided that the allowances passed at that time, which was exorbitant, be reduced for the prime minister and the ministers traveling overseas. Media decree was another decree, which we repealed. So there are a number of laws that are there that we will have to systematically go through. Some of them are very draconian, some of them may not be necessary anymore, some may need changes, not repeal, but some may need changes. So all those, and we're bringing back the Law Reform Commission, which was a body which used to look at. So these things can be systematically looked at, you know, in consultation with the appropriate people, those who understand the implications of them. And some of them will be repealed, some of them will be changed.
Would they get an opportunity to be re-registered?
They will get an opportunity to get deregistered, some within the same framework. But if we feel that we need to change some of those policies, requirements, we will. Because we want all of you who have been deregistered to be registered and become a functioning NGO. Our idea is more than mere.
I have one more question. What's the government's stand on TELSS? And I'm also curious about the USP grant.
We gave you 10 million already. We, I attended your council meeting and I made the commitment, we are storing the grant, the annual grant to the university, which is about 34 million dollars. So from this year, your annual contribution that Fiji government always used to contribute will be included in the budget and that will be paid. We are going to include additional amounts to clear out the areas from the past years. And so, University will have a lot of money, don't worry. Again, this was a, we, you see, what happened with TELSS was the allocation of about roughly 120, 130 million dollars a year was for anybody who wanted to go to the university or any tertiary institution. As long as you got an admission, you got loaned. So plus, there was a small number of scholarships. It started with 600, then it went to 1,000. So a large majority of the students, in the previous schemes, lot more students got full scholarships, you know. And these scholarships have been there in the 70s, in the 80s, Bhagat would know. Some of us in the 80s studied on scholarship, you know. And it was not based on, it was not based on just your marks, it was also based on income in some instances. So if you had somebody from a rural school, you know, getting 300 marks and wanted to do a law degree, and a law is not on the list of scholarships in that thousand, you won't get the scholarship. You could take loan. And so depending on the time for the duration of the degree, three years or four years, you will get the debt. So on average, student coming out of the university would easily reckon a debt of 35 to 40,000 dollars, in some cases more, depending on the number of years. And the total since 2014 is about 613 million dollars. And hardly anybody is paying it. So when they said, "Okay, you know, we'll give you 50% discount", basically those, the rich ones, you know, who could afford, who could go and take bank loans, managed to clear that, but a very small percentage. So on average, government was collecting 5 to 7 million dollars, somewhere around there. So what we've decided is that we are going to, and the whole manpower planning, human resource, areas, technical skills, people who should be in the technical school ended up trying to get a degree. Some of them didn't complete, ended up with a huge debt. So what we've decided as a government, that we will just write off that 613 million dollar, because it's not going to come anywhere. And what we will do is rationalize the scholarships with the same amount of money that was going into loan. With a smaller amount, probably a reduced amount, we could provide scholarships to everyone who wants to go to university or technical institution. But we will set out a criteria of priority areas, of marks. Everybody can't be an engineer, everybody can't be a doctor. So we are able to plan the whole treasury education entry, and that will be, that will work very well. That will be good for the labor market, good for the country in terms of its manpower plan. That's what we will announce in the budget, we are looking at the TELSS legislation as well.
My name is Pranil. I'm on behalf of Lotoka Chamber of Commerce, representing all the businesses in Lotoka. We have got some recommendations and some suggestions for this new, for this 2023 budget consultation. It was pleasing to hear that the cost of doing business and ease of doing business is being focused. That's, thank you for that. So one of the things that has been highlighted by some of the businesses is the high commercial rents, and which is causing a hindrance to their investment. If they would like to do some investments or they would like to expand their retail business, the commercial rents are huge amounts. They have to pay huge amounts first of all to enter into their property and then to start up their business. So there's a request that commercial rents should be free. Or if possible, there should be a standard rate that be charged on commercial rent, that is, rent that should be charged based per area and based on the size of the shop. So that would be a fair to all the businesses, instead of the landlord charging high rent. And the second one is that there is a VET percentage. Currently, there are three rates of VET percentages. That's confusing to most of the businesses why it was introduced. So still, everyone is looking for the answers. But to this new, to this budget submission, we'd like to request if one... we'd like to request if one percentage be imposed, either it's 9, 12.5, or 15. Having 0, 9, and 15 percentage VAT is a confusion to all the businesses, especially doing accounting for VAT. Especially, I am sure all the accounting firms here knows the issues they are facing, the challenges, and it's very time-consuming. And also increases the cost of labor because two or three people have to be assigned to do that. The third issue the businesses are facing is that the high rate of internet cost. The country, the world is moving to digitization. Everyone wants to have a secure digital platform that includes having a high-security internet, whereby they can have firewalls, they can have cloud backups. And mostly all the portals, for example, FRCS portal, FNPA portals, everything is done online to do, for the ease of business. However, not all businesses are able to afford it. If they are able to afford it, there's not high internet connectivity. Especially during this month end, for example, end of May, whereby every businesses are, were struggling with challenges lodging their income tax returns, VAT returns. So the country, our country is a developing country. So we should be also like other developed nations, whereby in a click, we are able to do a job. And everyone should be able to prevent their data on the cloud backup and should be able to prevent themselves from the cyber crimes, which is also one of the major issue the country is facing. So if the internet rates and high connectivity is provided, so businesses can look into it, having firewalls to protect their data. The fourth one is that, especially, this is for the investment, whereby any investor or any business would want to buy a property or any individual want to buy a house, they have to go under, undergo a long process. They have to, first of all, they have to get consent. And also they have, upon request, they have to submit the building plans. They have to submit the certified true copy from the register of titles and the valuation, which that said, the title is already in the titles office, which the buyer already has to organize themselves. And if anyone wants to buy a house, for example, from under Housing Authority, they are requested to submit all these documents. So there should be a linkage between the each statutory body, for example, lands department, housing authority, to also city councils. So that any, all the information are available to, on the portal and they are not requested to run here and there. So that also will ease the process. Currently, that process takes, for example, six to months or so. It will be done in a one month or two month and investment will be done. The fifth one, that this has been highlighted many times in Lotoka, and I understand that the relevant stakeholders are also working towards it, the issue of termite infestation in Lotoka, which is also spreading to other parts of the country, which is a major cost of all the businesses and individuals and households in Lotoka. Whereby, they have to keep on renovating the property. Instead of focusing on their businesses, they have to incur huge cost in buying the building materials and the timbers are not treated as well. They are not assured which ones to use. And there's no regulatory measures that we can control or mitigation procedures. Also, some of the individual houses are requested to go to biosecurity and get your property sprayed to prevent from more infestation of termites. But they have to pay a price over there. Individuals face struggles in the cost of living, but also have to incur those expenses. So there's a request if there should be a reduction in import duty for the termite-proof building materials, such as PVC boards, metal sheets, irons which prevent from termites. And the last one is that, as the country is also, as has been highlighted, the country is facing the labor shortage, which is a major issue. We are not sure how true it is that the threshold or the bracket is going to be reduced from 30,000 to 16,000. So there's a lot of feedback or concerns raised that if the bracket is reduced, that will lead to more reduction in the disposable income of consumers or purchasing power of the consumers will go down. And there will, the country is also currently recovering from the COVID phases. And that chunk of income lost from their pocket or from their income won't allow them to spend on other luxury or other necessities, which will in return give back to the country in terms of more business activity, economic activity, or tax to the, or tax or VAT to the government. That's all at the moment. So we have some more, we will be doing a written submission. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that very well-thought-out, you know, presentation on a number of issues. And I couldn't agree with you more on many of them. The first one, as an economist, I agree with you 100%. I mean, I always used to teach a course in public finance, you know, which dealt with taxation. And I always used to tell my students there are five principles of a good taxation system. And one of them is, the most important one was administrative simplicity, apart from, you know, flexibility, revenue, and all the rest of it. Yes, I can tell you, it certainly won't be three rates anymore after the budget. We are toying with the idea. We're looking at the figures of the pros and cons of one or two. But it certainly won't be three. That I can tell everyone that it won't be three rates anymore. In fact, if you look at the history of VAT, you know, between 2011 to 2015, it was 15%. You know, some of us, you know, argued some years back, in 2014, they should be reduced from 15 to 10%. And then it got reduced from 15 to 9%. And then post-COVID, you know, we ended up having three rates, 0, 9, and 15. And I can understand and sympathize with the businesses, you know, in terms of the complication it's created. So we, on the ease of doing business, absolutely on the dot. As I said, you know, we talked about it for many years. We must have spent a lot of money, some of it, you know, we wasted. But we haven't been able to fix a lot of the bottlenecks within the system. As I said, DPM Kamkamida, you know, who comes from a business background himself, having worked in a number, he is leading the charge and we're expecting him to, through the Investment Facilitation Committee. These things, some of these things can't be addressed next day. It'll take time, it'll require some legislative changes, some would require regulatory changes. But a lot of it also would require changes in the processes. And hopefully, in the next six months to a year, we would be able to address fundamentally a large chunk of those real, what we call, you know, binding constraints that hold businesses from reducing the transaction cost. And you're right, I mean, why should businesses just out of some, you know, hanky panky, you know, processes and some ill-thought-out ideas pay an additional cost? One businessman told me, two years back, he said, his accountant used to do a lot of work in terms of planning for the business. He said, now he's spending all the time with frica, trying to address a lot of the issues. So transaction costs do go up whenever these things are complicated. On labor market issues, I, we are fully aware, the, I mean, the rate... This is a global phenomenon, but we are affected more because Australia, New Zealand, I mean, post-COVID, there's been a lot of restructuring, adjustment. The whole labor market has changed, there's pent-up demand. And suddenly, in all the regions, you know, for three years, projects were being held up because of the COVID and post-COVID. Now, there's this huge demand for labor in Australia, New Zealand, in other countries, Europe, in the US. And because people are used to different kind of an environment after COVID, there's also adjustment there. And we're losing a lot of people. Australia, for example, you know, just opened up and said, you know, if you come as a student, you can work instead of 20 hours, 40 hours. So a lot of people, you know, good people, you know, accountants, you know, having good jobs here, resigned, sold their houses, took a visa and went and enrolled as a student. But I think they're changing it back to 20 hours. So that might slow down. But we're losing other skills too. And in the past, we were losing people, but we're also training enough people. Our technical colleges, vocational programs in schools was working very well, there was a pathway. You know, you get into those who couldn't get through Form 7 or Form 6 or Form 4, you know, went into these technical vocational schools. Then there was a pathway, they would go to FNTC. There was apprenticeship scheme. All that was abolished. And suddenly, they set up technical colleges. We poured in about $20 million or more and it all went down the drain. Doesn't exist anymore. So what we're trying to do is, we've, the last couple of, two months ago, the cabinet approved funding for Polytech. We're trying to restore this TELSS. And we are making sure that some of this competency-based training can be provided quickly. So, you know, training painters, tile layers, carpenters, some of these, you know, people who walk in the hotels, you know, doing the beds, for example. One hotel owner told me, they got the people from the villages nearby, put them on the job train. And he said, you know, in few months, they were, they were all fantastic workers. They picked up their skills, they needed a little bit of training. So some, we can do quickly. Some could be in the, in the long term. And so we're looking at that and making sure that we bring them. That is not going to solve all the problem. So we will still have to, perhaps, you know, get labor from outside. Every day, we're getting requests. So we are reviewing the immigration process and procedures. We are also going to review the immigration law that was changed, I don't know where it came from. And suddenly, it said, you need to be here for 15 years to be eligible for citizenship. I mean, who wants to come and live in Fiji and wait for 15 years to get citizenship? Behind investors, behind money, there are people. So if a investor wants to come to Fiji, he or she might think, you know, I will take my family, my kids. I mean, a lot of people do that. You go and, you go to Australia, you want to be a big investor, you're not going to go there without, you know, knowing or having the knowledge that you might get a PR and after... No country requires 15 years of residency before you get a citizenship. I don't know where it came from, but that's something that we want to change to, to give confidence. Last cabinet, we made the decision that all former Fiji citizens, whether you are in the Bolonika Ambula, whether you are descendant of the Girmitia or descendant of any other community, if you are overseas, you have another passport, right now you come, you get only three months permit. That has been, that will be removed. That's been approved by cabinet, it'll go through parliament, change in the Immigration Act, it'll be done. This is all being done to ensure that we get our people back, we make it easier for people to come, leave, invest, and contribute towards our economy. Some people are not just leaving because they have a job. There are other reasons why people are leaving and we need to address those. For example, health. I mean, I can give you an example. I have a niece, you know, between her and the husband, and they're probably earning more than $150,000 or $60,000. They have two little daughters. And she told me one day, she said, well, I'm thinking of leaving, I'm thinking of migrating to Australia. I said, why? Your uncle's just come into government. Why do you want to leave? She said, she's not sure about the health services. I mean, so there are different reasons. And I think that's why this announcement by the Indian government for a super specialty hospital, the new private hospital in Nandi. We are dealing with Lotoka and BAH, that's another story. But we want to, we have a very clear intention as a government that we want to improve our health services. There are issues about law and order. And I thank you, DPC Western, you know, for coming. I thank you and welcome you. We had a number of, in a number of forums in Nandi and today at the Lotoka vendors market. People were telling us stories about, you know, somehow they feel that the crime rate has increased and that there is a lot of petty thefts, house break-ins. And we've had this in Suba as well. So what we, what we are thinking, you know, as part of the budget, and of course, we will have this discussion with the Minister of Home Affairs and Commissioner of Police. You know, many years ago, I, you know, in the 80s and 90s, you know, we used to have thing called police beat, police patrol. You know, police were seen in the, you know, towns and cities and, you know, suburban areas. They're also seen in the rural areas, sometimes on horseback. And police presence is very important to, you know, it's not about just catching the criminals, it's about deterring, you know, criminal activities. So we will be thinking, you know, in terms of how we can support the police in the budget, you know, in terms of addressing some of those issues. Termite, we heard about it even before we came into government. We are seriously looking at how we can support the people, especially the low-income people. You know, I think the richer ones, more upper-middle-income people can handle it, but I think those at the lower level are really struggling. But your suggestion about, you know, looking at whether we can make some of those duty-free, those items come along, I think we should note that, that's a good suggestion. And if it is possible, I'm not promising that we would be able to do that. As I said, you know, we would, we have to tread a very fine balance. Some things we may be able to do next year. Because we, this budget, we want to make sure that we do not take a drastic step in changing things where we might disrupt the recovery system. We want to make sure that we support the recovery and we listen to the submissions. Some we would be able to do it in this budget, some we will plan it for next year. And we want to do it properly so that the unintended consequences can be avoided of some of those decisions. Because there will be equally others who would argue that the duty on that would be appropriate. But thank you for raising those issues. Sorry, it's a long answer, but you know, you had a very good submissions I needed to talk about.
My name is Patrick Morgum. I'm currently the CEO for Empower Facebook. First and foremost, sir, I would just like to say congratulations on your appointment as acting prime minister for Fiji. It's a really great honor that we have you with us for this consultation and also as the minister for Economy and Finance, which you hold. So, sir, congratulations on your appointment. It's quite a big achievement, so we're there with you. And also, I was very flattered when you talked about CSOs or NGOs. We are a NGO, a national NGO, and we are proud citizen of Lotoka City, where we had office for the last 29 years. So just to mention about some of the things we have, we provide counseling support services, mental health, psychosocial support services. We work with government, with Ministry of Health, and also with Ministry of Social Welfare and Women. That's where our key government partners. We have tried to fill the gap that government didn't have. Whereas government did not have counselors in hospital, we tried to fill that gap. That's what we are doing. As a non-government organization, we supplement government services by providing service to the people. And I was really flattered again when you mentioned the third part, the service for... And I was really flattered again, when you mentioned the third part, the service for the people. And I would really sincerely request, if the government can look into mental health issues, we need support from government. We also have donor agencies. Sir, the solution here, as Minister for Finance, to request the donor to provide us funding. That is, government will not have to give us the money, but donor agencies can provide us funding to do the work that we do. So, it's a simple request from the government. This is something we had a challenge previously, we could not do, where government was wanting donors to give only to government, not to NGOs. That was a challenge for NGOs. So we have 50 full-time staff throughout Fiji. We are not a small, they are staff with families, that's a bread and butter issue for them. We employ people, they pay taxes as well. So we contribute as well to economy. We work with government in disasters and in times of peace. And so many times, we forget that NGOs or CSOs are independent. No, we are part of government, but we are non-government. So currently, look at our situation, see how the national NGOs and smaller NGOs that are struggling to survive, how the government can assist, just by requesting donor to look at our situation. And lastly, sir, I would just like to highlight on one of the services that government can introduce, for the service for the people, look at victim support services. So we have rape victims, we have domestic violence victims, we need some kind of support system for these victims. If the government is caring for the people, let's show and do something. If we can spend millions for prisons, police, law enforcement, justice, why not the victims? So let's think about the victims. If this government does that, I think our victims will be supported. For long-term support, they need long-term support, not just short-term and they're forgotten. Where the court case is finished, the victim is left to fend for themselves. Who takes care of them? The family. The trauma they go through, who helps them? No one. So I would sincerely request, if this government is caring for the people, to think about creating something for the victim support services. Thank you.
Thank you for that. As I said earlier, we, this is a government which believes that the NGO, NGOs, non-governmental organizations, there's a lot of wisdom, there's a lot of experience, there is a lot of knowledge about what they do. And we have said openly and publicly that we want to work with the NGOs, we want to empower them, and if you need any support from the government, you know, to access, you know, funding from, you know, donors, we would be very happy to support that. And there's something that we should look at in the budget as well. It might be small amounts, but we want to indicate our intention and our willingness to work with non-governmental organizations. Thank you for that, and thank you for the work that you do, and your suggestion about, you know, victim welfare, you know, mental health, it's a big issue. You know, the things that are being done, but a lot of people are not really aware of the intricacies of, you know, people who go through mental health problems. But thank you for that.
My name is Richard Lucas. I run a communications company and a small radio station. I've been involved in the communications industry more than 50 years. In 2008, the then Minister of Communications completely gutted the ministry, and all institutional memory was lost. And I suspect that a lot of their records also destroyed by the removal of some of these people. So now, the Ministry of Communications basically has nobody who knows what they're doing. It has a permanent secretary, nice guy, but he's got about as much knowledge of communications I've got on my little finger. The minister I've spoken to several times about the needs for government to use the expertise that exists in the commercial community. And at the moment, there isn't a high degree of trust between government and the commercial people. They tend to feel in some ways that they are the rulers, they're making the rules, and we have to obey them. We have to move more to a consultative process between people who are capable. Now, I've gone to the Minister of Communications, offered my services, to sit down with myself, his staff, of both the Telecommunications Authority and the Ministry of Communications, to try and reconstruct the whole industry. When they first got going, I said, "Write to every guy and person in communications in Fiji and get a list of all the frequencies they're using." They didn't do that. And they haven't a clue who's got what or where. And it's not an acceptable situation for the industry to grow. So I would strongly recommend a much bigger relationship between the, people like myself have been around a long time, and know communications right from start to finish, and say, "Come on, let's get together and try and sort it all out." Now, on top of this, as an engineer, I built digital television in Tonga, I built digital television in Papua New Guinea, but when the opportunity came to do the same thing in Fiji, I wasn't even given the opportunity. The process of tendering gave me exactly seven days to put forward a proposal for digital television. The people that were doing digital television in Fiji here were basically people who weren't particularly well-liked in New Zealand. And right from the word go, I had letters and contact with people in New Zealand, warning me of the difficulty of this particular company. I went back to the government, I said, "Do you understand what's going on? Do you understand? Have you done any background information?" And they said, "Mr. Lucas, keep quiet, we know what we're doing." The net result is, at the end of it, they spent $125 million on something that should have cost $20 million. Now, the government has to start to listen to people who know what they're doing. If they're not prepared to do this, then we're gonna have a bipartisan society. And so I would thank you first of all for the concept of developing stability. But we need broadness to make sure that those in society who know what they're doing can contribute to the growth. Thank you.
You've actually hit the nail on the head, and as I said, the philosophy of the new government, and I said this very clearly at the National Economic Summit, I said, governments, as an economist, you know, I understand that governments do not always have all the wisdom and the knowledge that they ought to have. A lot of that resides in the community, in the business sectors. And we had this fantastic, you know, two-day economic summit. We had these thematic working groups, and some of the discussions, the ideas that came through, you know, from different, ranging from law and order, to poverty alleviation, to oceans, to indigenous business, to economic sectors, health, fantastic. And what we have done is to create a permanent, you know, secretariat within the Ministry of Finance planning unit. The thematic groups, it's not just that they will finish in two days, they will remain a permanent feature, they will work with the government. We want to make sure that they remain permanent partners. And you're right, I mean, when governments ignore the knowledge that is out there, and we don't pretend to know, I mean, as business people, you know how to run the business. You work hard, you know, you pay taxes. Government's job is to make sure that we make appropriate laws, you know, we provide, you know, law and order, we make sure that, you know, institutions function, and the environment is conducive to doing all that. That's the job of the government, and that's what we intend to do. We want to develop that partnership. It's about shared leadership. And, you know, countries which have done that have progressed very well. And fundamentals of democracy, institutions have to respect that. So, I agree with you. I mean, you're right, I mean, the amount of money we spend on volessi, the amount of money we spend on giving rebate to filmmakers, $400 million, imagine what we could have done with it. And there are, you know, hundreds of other examples. One of the school teachers today said, you know, "Let's not look back." I said, "Yeah, we, we don't have to necessarily look back, but sometimes to look forward, you know, you have to..." And I said, "You have to look back as to what we're left with, you know, in terms of the debt." So, very important point. Sorry.
John, I'm one of a practicing accountant in Lotoka, and I'm really happy to see you as a Deputy Prime Minister of our country, because you've been a lecturer at once. You've taught me economics in USB. Now, my concern as a practicing accountant, there are a few things. One is, I have seen government when dishing out incentives, I'm not blaming you, but, you know, general, when dishing out incentives, they look at combined income, they look at combined income. And most of the time, incentives are, I mean, whether it be $100 or $50, incentive is incentive. Incentives are given mostly to, you know, like, low-income earners, which is classed as, you know, people earning income below $30,000 and below. Now, the question is, if, in a household, a husband and wife, if they are earning $30,000 each, government is losing $3,600 plus per year, and still they are getting incentive. I know most of you will be angry on me, but this is what I have noticed, and I suggest that these are some of the things that should be looked into the next budget. The other thing is this, in 2021, 2021, when the budget was announced, the minister concerned raised issues on MBBS students, saying that the MBBS students, that there are a lot of medical staffs, and one day, there'll be no job for medical students. Now, 2021, the students who got NTS, sorry, NTS, National Purpose Student with a mark of 380+, were not awarded scholarship because the parents' combined income were more than $100,000. The student, the student got the mark on their own merit, and not on the parents' merit. So, what happened after raising voices, I think, from 2022, the scholarship started on a normal basis, where the students were given scholarship. The 2021 students were left behind, and they are still doing MBBS. And I think about doing MBBS in Fiji for one year is about $30,000. So for a parent to take out $30,000 from their own pocket for a year is too much. And there are only a handful of students at the moment who is doing on a private basis. So I request the government to look into this as well. And number three is, going back to the temates, I have seen that there are a lot of insecticides, which are quite expensive, but very helpful in keeping temates. So I request the government to look into, you know, like, providing concession, duty concession, plus any other concession possible, to get that, so that insecticides are sold at a very cheaper rate in the market. Because not only the poor, but the middle class and the older, the middle class and the richer ones also have to fork out money to, you know, like, do the renovation, which is not, which has not been planned. Because if a person is doing, preparing, I mean, building a house, they are planning for a long-term investment, not for a, you know, like, three, five-year term. So, that's number three. And another one is based on my client's request, if second-hand clothing duty be reduced, because currently, it's at the maximum, I have seen, and not only I, even the council staff can watch for it, that from Thursdays to Saturdays, there are tents going on in the ground, and they're mostly selling second-hand clothes to, you know, like, in their living. So if the duty for that second-hand clothes be reduced, so that, you know, like, more vendors and more, you know, like, it can be sold in the villages and more, every area, so that, you know, like, people's livelihood can be, you know, restored. Thank you.
As I said, you know, we will be rationalizing all that as part of the new legislation and the scholarships. Some good suggestions on the temi. I am not sure what insecticide, but I think we need to check, and I think it's a good suggestion, that, you know, to help our people, I mean, if we can give duty concession, zero duty to get that to treat specifically, you know, temates, we will do that. But we just need, you know, to get the right information. But thank you for those comments.
One of the insecticides that is currently being sold in the market is about $37. For those of you who don't know, but it's quite effective. I pride myself, I'm not, I'm not that, I mean, like, I'm not a...
$37 for one liter. One liter. So that's quite expensive. And what's the usage? So with one liter, how much, how much you can do, you know, like, say...
On a 100 ml, you can put 16-liter water and mix it with 100 temi.
No, I was just wondering, you know, how much one liter would last? How much will it treat, you know? So if you spray it once?
Depending on the intensity of the temi.
Sir, my name is Philomena, I'm from the Lotoka Market Vendor Association. I know you were with us today, but I didn't have the opportunity to make the submission on behalf of the association. I have a question that I would like to raise. One is the middlemen and the millionaires that we usually term that sit in the market. We would like to request, the MVA is, the associations is not very happy of these millionaires sitting in the market. One, because they own a lot of stalls. And we have people in the informal sectors that are really in need, that can come in and make use and utilize this stall for their daily living. So we are requesting, if they cannot be removed, if a policy can be enacted by the council, and of course, in the bylaws of the market, that to give the council the powers for them to be removed, because these millionaires have business running outside the market. They have rental cars, they have shops, they have shops in other towns. So there has to be, the council has to be given the power to have a data collection assessment on all the vendors, and to see those that really need to sit inside the market, and those that really need to move out. If that is going to create a chaos to the government, maybe we could impose for them to pay tax through the stall fees to the council. That is, because the middlemen, when they supply, they have a stall in Suba, they have one in Lotoka, they have one in Tabor. You have farmers right in Tavuni who own stalls in Lotoka Market. And they own more than five stalls, 10 to 30 stalls. So if the informal sector have to grow, the gap between the informal and the formal sector, as the government of the day have to look at this. If you really want to collect the revenue, of course, the market vendors can give it to you. We are okay if you're coming up for us to pay stall with a new budget, but please, if we could remain in the same rate that we are usually paying. We would love to pay a stall fee, because of course, we need something to be done in the market. The other is the informal sectors accessing financial assistance. You know, we are restricted in this field because of the commercial banks, so if there's no way that we could, a policy could be written up, or a system which could suit us, which could suit informal sectors to access the financial assistance, the SMEs, from the commercial banks. The other is the, what is the government's stand on the homeless people? Why I'm raising this? Because the Lotoka market is attached to the bus tent, and the bus tent is where they usually sleep. Of course, we deserve a better working environment, but if there is an... But if there is an assessment done on these homeless people, they are collecting land lease, they are collecting welfare benefits. So we are spending money unnecessarily. They, in the market, when they receive their food voucher, they come and sell it to the vendors. They target the women that come in from the rural areas. Okay? So if there could be assessment where we can spend this on those that are really in need rather than those that are sleeping on the streets. Because I don't think so, they deserve it. If the government of the day keep continuing giving them, they will become lazy, and this is what's going to happen. Lastly, the security. In the market area, of course, it's in the middle of the town. We have a market police post. If there could be MOU between the police force, the council and these, the well-established security firms in our country that could help the police in the looking after the market area or in the town. Thank you, sir.
Noted all the issues that you've raised. We need both people like yourselves and we also need millionaires around. But you have an important point. I can't give you definite answer now, you know, in terms of those stalls and who owns how much. But I will leave it to the local government, something that we take note of and work through in an appropriate way to see how we can address some of those concerns, if it is a serious concern, you know, with respect to what's happening in the market.
I would love to raise some issues. This is, first of all, in regards to the license, business license. Been a director for Hobro Brothers Trading. I've been running a business here in Lotoka for four years. It's going to five years now. We started off a license. So for last sixteen years, government, from last two thousand and nineteen, twenty, there wasn't any license, business license issues. I'm trying to raise an issue in the city of Lotoka because I have a shop in the main street. It's really disturbing me when the people without a license don't know whether they have registration or what, because we pay tax. And I've quoted from him, as he said, as people they were selling on the, along the ground. They are women's, it's a women program, I know. I don't know whether they have a license or what. It's really jeopardize people like us. We have a retail shop. We're selling clothes, it's retailers. And it's jeopardize our business when they sell on the streets. I don't know whether they pay tax or not. So might as well, if the government for today can give back a license to a business. Everybody run a business in Fiji has to have a license instead of registration. Because it was from twenty twenty, there wasn't any license has been given, it was revoked. So businesses nowadays, if they want to run, they just go registration then come back. We have to think of the people who wants to loan, the business people, they loan from the bank. They cannot go for loan until an earnest if they have a license. So for me, I pay tax, export and import. And what about those people, they go without a license? They never pay tax and they just doing their business along the streets and whereabouts in the city. I plead to you, please, this government have to make a stop of those people. They doing their business everywhere. And secondly is, I'm together with a lady from the market. I'm looking after Lotoka urban. I'm together with her in regards to the market vendors. Yes, it is very true, there are so many rich people. They're running a business in Lotoka. They having a vendors, they also have a big business and they deal with their business inside. Many of them, Mr. Beeman, they also look, they also came from social welfare assistance. I have noted, I did my DBD from there on social welfare. I knew very clearly that many of them, the business people, they sitting in the market, they are well off, they still receiving social welfare assistance. If we, the government, can look into that place. And thirdly is, people who come from the rural, especially women. We can do something for them because many of them, when I close my shop in the evening, many of them, they lying down on the street, especially women, they came in to do their market, they're selling on Thursday, Friday and Saturday. They have lesser places for them to stay, even the mall. It's very less for them. So if we can accommodate a big space for the women, so if we can put that up to the budget, so if we can develop something else for them to look after. I think that what I wanted to give for today's budget. I think that's the same thing that you wanted to mention about.
Thank you. We'll just get to a few more and then I'll answer.
More about the economy and the small and medium enterprises. My name is Dinesh Jimradas. I run a garment business and I have customers all over Fiji. Most of them are small shopkeepers with maybe one person as owner or maybe the person and his wife. Most of the time, they might have one or two staff. And I'm worried about the ease of doing business. Just two years ago, just last year also, I lost two of my customers. One was in Lomboka, one was in Savusavu. They stopped doing business because of so difficult to do all these vet things and everything online. They are not very computer-friendly and they are close to sixty. And I'm also worried about the other small and medium enterprise. Most of us people do not have a computer, they do not have a smartphone. And I do not know why FRCS wants us to do everything online. And their system is also very slow. I mean, you try to log in, there's always some, oh, wait, and then again. It's nothing like if you go to Amazon, you can do it straight away, you know? They don't have a bandwidth and they want the whole country to be involved online. It doesn't make sense, it just doesn't make sense. And it doesn't make sense for old person who is over sixty wanting to do business and extend his life by doing business. I mean, they'd rather retire if they have so much hassle to do business. So I'm asking that if you can arrange a talk with FRCS to make it a bit easier to do business, like for older people who are not computer literate, they can do it manually. You know, rather than like they do in Australia. I think in Australia, the older people, older people do do that. I do not know why Fiji government, Fiji Revenue and Customs don't want us to do it like that. They keep saying, we'll teach you. Half the time, I can't remember my own password, you know? And it's just so difficult. And if you, if you try to print out the document which we make, it's in such a small writing, you can hardly read it. And it's in color gray, not even black. Half the stuff, it doesn't make sense with Fiji Revenue and Customs Authority. So I would like you to, because that's a revenue for the government and new businesses trying to set up here will have difficulty trying to adjust with all these systems. And older people may not want to continue. People like me, I want to continue, but if it's too difficult, it's not worth it, you know? It's just not worth it. And the other thing is, every year, we have to register. I think this was done by the old government to keep an eye on people who are government-friendly and kick out those people who are not government-friendly. Maybe, I'm not sure. But I don't see any reason why we need to register every year. It doesn't make sense. Why is there so much red tape doing business in Fiji? It just doesn't make sense. So these two things I want to take into, for the government, new government to look into. And there's also other things like cashless society. I think a lot of, even the banks are going towards that way. But I do not see how a person, your child is going to school, he is having trouble, he has to go by taxi. How will the child pay the taxi or whatever, you know? I mean, it's not feasible for the whole country to go cashless. Nobody, not everyone has a smartphone. It doesn't make sense. Not everyone has credit cards. It is simply not feasible for Fiji at this moment. Maybe twenty years down the line, when everyone is rich enough to give every child of theirs a smartphone and money in their smartphone, then it's feasible. But at the moment, it is not feasible. There was one more issue I forgot, sorry. I just... Other issue is a level playing field. I run a garment business and it's a local garment business. We do export, but it's very, very minute. We pay taxes. When we import goods, we pay taxes. But the export factories, they do not pay taxes. And they are allowed to sell their goods locally. So I'm, I'm in a bit of a problem, you know? I mean, I have like a part of my feet cut off. You understand what I'm trying to say? It's difficult to compete with someone who is not paying taxes, who has a more... Well, I think you understand what I'm trying to say. It's, I just need a level playing field, everyone is treated equally. Then we can do business. If they can sell cheaper than me, well, then good. It's my problem, not the government's problem, not any other problem. It just needs, everything has to be the same. Everyone, no matter how big they are, how small they are, they must be treated the same. And that was my last thing. I will leave my, I did this in my budget consultation, I'll leave this paper with you. Thank you.
I mean, I am actually quite pleased that I'm having this consultation because I agree with a lot of good ideas that are coming through. One thing that, I mean, we, I know about FRCS, we've talked about it. We've got a new board. We have already suspended the third phase of vet monitoring system. We want to look at how efficient FRCS can be. On your point about registration, I think, I mean, if you're a business, you pay tax. I mean, unless, of course, you know, you get exemption on certain policy-based issues. But the point you're making about level playing field, as an economist, I think I understand, you know, the importance of that. But one thing that I want to say to you, businesses, and I've been saying it quite openly, that we want to change that style of governance where you have favorites, where you don't like some, you like others. We know, you know, governments come through political parties. Political parties need funding, police parties need resources, there are laws to do that. That's fine. But we've had this system before, you know? But there was never an attempt to victimize, to discriminate people who didn't support you. I mean, I remember in the good old days, you know, people, businesses would be actively associated with opposition parties, give money openly, yet the government of the day would treat that as a normal thing. We want, we want to do the same and we are saying to, we don't want to look back. We are saying, every individual, you know, must be free. That's your democratic right. You should be able to make your decisions about, you know, where you ought to be. Government's job, when you are in government, your job is to make sure that you do the right thing by the people, regardless of what you think about, how they are affiliated, where. And so that is very important. And we, as a government, are not going to engage in that kind of, you know, scenario. We want to make sure that everybody feels, you know, free, confident. And we're not daunted by criticisms, we're not distracted by them. Criticisms are good for governments. You know, constructive, we can learn from people's criticism. Of course, you know, it doesn't have to be malicious, it doesn't have to be, you know? But constructive criticisms, you know, transparent, accountable.
Thank you. I'm Ravnit from University of Fiji and I think I'm the luckiest one because if you look at the accounting terminology of life or lasting fast out. So I'll be address first. I've got three concerns. One, I think it was already discussed and addressed, but brother Dinesh sitting here. We have been having several meetings about crime rate these days. And thanks for giving assurance that the government will reinforce the law and order to see there's a lot of patrolling going on so that it reduces the crime rate. The second one is, earlier on, the minister spoke about fairness. So, please, I sitting there. I think the government has already given assurance that they're going to restore the grant for USP. And as far as the economic development is concerned, I think, I'm from University of Fiji. We equally contribute to the skill shortage for the economy, so we should be treated fairly as well. In, with the past government, we were informed that the universities are governed by Fiji High Education Commission. And they had hired consultants from New Zealand who designed the funding model for FHC. How best that is working, we don't know. Because this is not a consultative process at all. FHC does not consult the investors, or maybe they consult one investor only. But prior to twenty eighteen, investors were invited, where we were discuss about the national shortage, national priority areas of the government. But this does not happen these days. And how the funding formula, they derive in terms of allocating grants to universities, we don't know. So I think fairness is not practiced there. And I'll be happy if the minister assures that all three universities will be treated fairly with the funding model. The last, I think, minister has already said about rationale behind tertiary scholarships and loan services. Again, there are lot of things which the education providers face, which may not be known to the government or to the students. A good example is, previously, the government's financial year was January to December. One point in time, they changed it from August to July. They did not realize that governments, maybe one quarter of the budget goes into the education sector. Right? One point in time, the government's budget was four billion and one billion itself was allocated to education ministry. And earlier on, we had the six hundred million which the government is going to write off from TELSS. So in twenty twenty-one, when the government did restructuring and policy changes were brought in for TELSS, they made zero provision for MBBS. They said, no student will be given MBBS loans or scholarship. And they said Fiji is following WHO, one doctor is two thousand patients. So they said there are nine hundred oversupply of doctors in Fiji. In twenty twenty-two, they said we are shortage of doctors. MBBS is a six-year-long program. How do they expect that overnight the universities will produce doctors? They can't. So they did not evaluate their national priority areas. And all of a sudden, in twenty twenty-one, when they announced that there will be no scholarships and loans for MBBS students, twenty twenty-two, when the topers from Sangam scored three hundred eighty-five mark, she was not able to do MBBS because there was no provision. So in twenty twenty-two March, when the government did its re-cash budget, they approved twenty national topers for MBBS. And this was for those students who scored three sixty-plus. There were several students who scored above three sixty, full science program, but they were not able to get, put the scholarship aside, they were not able to get loan from the government. put the scholarship aside, they were not able to get loan from the government. And last year, they said, we are allocating 40 scholarships. While doing the enrollment in University of Fiji, there were students who scored 365, 370. They were denied entry. So the owners were on to the parents to enroll them privately. So all I'm saying is, when the government changes its policy with TELSS, they announce it in the budget, which is in June or July. At that point in time, the student has already gone through half the year. And when they say that we will not support this for the accounting graduates, they say your criteria of getting NTS would be 333, 40. I'm just quoting a number. So when they are halfway through the academic year, it becomes difficult for the year 13 students to decide which program they will choose because they will not have sufficient fund with them or with their parents to support them for their tertiary education because government has changed its policy middle of the year. So in a nutshell, I think it should be a more consultative process when the government said that there will be no, if my collection is correct, they said there will be no loan system. It will be scholarship. They should see where the priority areas are. And this, again, should be a consultative process done with the universities because they are the educated providers, and they will know better how things are needed for the market. Thank you.
My name is Nikhilta, and I'm here to speak on behalf of my father, who runs a business here in Lotoka since 2006. So this is in regards to the FPOS machine that banks are providing. I wouldn't take a lot of time, just five minutes or less than that. So this has happened after COVID, when I don't know where this law has come from, that banks, specifically, we are dealing with BSP. So BSP has told us that we require 750 transactions per month to keep an FPOS machine. 750 transactions, that's not 750 dollars, but transactions. So just before COVID, we had some disagreement with BSP. So they wanted to take the FPOS machine from us. And after reaching out to RBF, they told us that we have, they cannot do that, and there were some consultations done. So we kept the FPOS machine. But just after COVID, imagine in COVID, all the businesses were shut down. We were not able to do any transaction. And just after COVID, they came, the FPOS machine started giving some problem. They took the FPOS machine, saying that they are going to fix it. Until that date, we did not get the machine back. We are told that we are not doing enough transactions. How did they expect us to do transactions just after COVID, when all the businesses were shut? People were told to stay home, and people were not spending that much. We have a retail and textile business. And we tried to reach out to FCC, RBF, but we also tried to reach out to the previous government, but nothing had been done. They said that there is a lot of cost being incurred by the banks. When we tried to find out how much cost they are incurring so that we could pay some incentives or if there are any fees that could be implied, because just because of an FPOS machine, we are now losing about 10 customers per day. And these customers are tourists. They don't carry cash, they carry cards. And we are losing business on that end. So my request to the government of the day is, just to look into this, please, sir. We have been trying to reach out and talk about this thing. People think that it's just a small issue. But from our end, when we are losing a person who comes to spend $100 or $200 in our shop, we are losing that customer, and we are not being able to get that revenue within, for us. So if you could please look into this and look into the laws that have been brought about in having an FPOS machine. If they are incurring a lot of charges, we are ready to pay for it. But at least tell us, because we know a family friend who is also running a business, and his FPOS machine is lying there, not being used for months. And yet, that has not been taken away. And when we tried to question this thing, nothing came up. They're just hiding behind all the information, RBF, and we are just kept in doubt. All our grievances are not heard about. So please, if you could look into this. Thank you.
We've taken note of that. We may want to raise it with them again. And the RBF, as the regulatory institution of commercial banks, we don't directly impose on them what they do. But you have a point. I mean, the bank ought to be reasonable. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. On scholarships, tertiary scholarships, funding, I take your point. Investors do not always have the best knowledge about, you know, the priority areas. They have a role to educate as many people as possible in the programs. The government's job is to ensure that, you know, we provide scholarships and support in areas where we feel, you know, the priority should be given. But you're right, you know, that all these things need consultation because, as you said, pointed out earlier, some decisions that were made were quite bogus, literally bogus. It was political. It was designed to create a sense of, you know, entitlement which was not in the broader interest of the country and the students and the parents and the economy itself. So we want to avoid all that. And obviously, there will be a lot of discussion. Investors should feel empowered under this government, unlike, you know, what you might have experienced before. And we believe in, you know, investors' academic freedom and how they are able to do things. But government, when it puts in resources, it has to make sure that those resources are put in priority areas and that we get value for money.
Acting Prime Minister, my apologies for this. But just for information, some two years back, Sorobumi International Women's Group, they built a women's shelter in Lotoka. So just for information, that women's shelter is still vacant. It's in Natambua, just near the Natambua Health Center. They build a four-bedroom house that was given to Ministry of Women to be used as a shelter for women that are facing domestic violence as a safe home for them. It's two years now that flat has not been occupied by a single woman. And just for your information, we have submitted, three times they have called for tender. We've submitted three times. And the most recent one, that Ministry of Economics or Ministry of Finance called, I think was this year. And that house is still vacant and does not meet the safety requirement to have a safe shelter home for battered women. So kindly, please, look into this.
Take note of that. Just, yeah, we'll take note of that. The couple of things that we heard from the market CEO, new wing, they said there is no fan, there is a lot of difficulty there. The other issue was Tawakumbu, I think, need for good market, satellite market. That's another issue that was raised. But the quick one was this market, no wing, no new wing. No fan, no proper ventilator. So I thought I'll just... So how long is it on hold now?
So we just waiting for the market piece to be restored.
Yeah.
So once our revenue stream is in.
Yeah. Okay.